A little bit more, but he's been, he's been working with the bylaw committee. He is, I can say, I knew this even before I knew he was involved. He's, he's pretty much the dean of by, he's the attorney who's the dean of bylaw and land use in Massachusetts. So he will be here later too, if there's any questions or explain that. I will entertain a motion to allow those people to speak even though they're not town residents. So anybody, so is there a second? Any discussion, no discussion, all in favor? Thank you. All right. Is, is the fire chief here? Probably gearing up for his party. Even though Mike's not here or Sully's not here, I, I just want to acknowledge that our fire chief's retiring after forty-one years of service to the town of Wakefield. And hopefully he's watching at home or something, but just, I, I just think that he's done a fantastic job, so. Okay, nothing, oh, one other, one other brief, just so we're on the record here. A member of the bylaw committee, Catherine Howitt, is a resident of the town, but she's not a voter. Okay, so, so she may, may not get up and speak or whatever her involvement is, I don't know. But just so you know, she's not going to vote, but she lives here, so we don't have to have a motion. All right, without further ado, we will, Article One. Article One, to see if the town will hear and accept a report of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five budget to see what the town will do about it. Denise Casey with your first, first star turn. Here you go.
Ian gave me strict instructions to make sure I was close to the mic. So, good morning. Make a motion that the town vote to accept a report of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five budget.
Good morning. It is an honor to be here before you to present Article One of the regular town meeting for November two thousand twenty-five. This is my twenty-seventh year of attending town meetings. However, this is the first year as your town administrator, and I am very excited to be here. I've been immersing myself in all things Wakefield for the last few months from meeting with department heads, town staff, Superintendent Lyons, Superintendent DeBarry, Wakefield Board, Commissions, Committees, and attending such events as the farmer's market, town day, Chamber of Commerce Women's Luncheon, the fire department open house, Spooktacular at the Senior Center, and, to my husband's chagrin, spending lots of money in your local businesses and restaurants. My family has been very impressed with the very warm welcome that we have received since taking the position here. Thank you for making me feel at home and solidifying my decision to come to Wakefield. I look forward to serving as your town administrator for many years to come. As stated in the forward in the warrant book, Wakefield closed fiscal two thousand twenty-five in solid financial shape. This is a testament to the adherence to the fiscal policies as set out by the town council, the finance committee, and the school committee. These sound financial policies include limiting the use of non-recurring revenue sources when making projections and planning and forecasting models. As a result of the last bond rating, Wakefield was downgraded from a triple A to a double A plus. While triple A rating is the highest, the double A plus still affords the town a competitive advantage when borrowing funds. The goal of the town is to regain that triple A bond rating so we can maximize our ability to bond at the lowest rates possible. By showing financial discipline and working as a team, I am confident that we can get there together. At this town meeting, in Article Two, we will request that the town meeting utilize four point zero five million dollars in free cash to balance the fiscal two thousand twenty-six budget. Article Three proposes to appropriate funds to supplement the water enterprise budget for two thousand twenty-six. Article Four is for voters to consider extending the senior citizens' property tax exemption for another three years. Article Five proposes to appropriate funds to make repairs on Middlesex Court and Middlesex Street. Article Six is to see if voters will grant a drainage easement on fifteen Traverse Street and one hundred Nahant Street. Articles Seven to Twelve represent the hard work of the bylaw review committee. This group of dedicated citizens has worked diligently for many months to bring before the town meeting the proposed bylaw amendments that will be presented and voted on today. I look forward to working with town council, staff, school department employees, residents, and businesses over the coming months. It will take commitment, diligence, sacrifice, and courage on all our parts to ensure that Wakefield is the, and I say the, top destination on the North Shore to work, live, and play. The remainder of this report will focus on more specifics of the town's performance in fiscal two thousand twenty-five. Because Wakefield continues to be a community where many wish to live, work, and play, we have experienced another year of solid new growth. Last year's new growth was close to one point one million. New growth certified for two thousand twenty-six was close to one point seven million. The revenue generated from local options meals and hotel tax was four hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight meals and six hundred and thirty-nine for thirty in hotel for a total of one million ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven. We have collected three hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and fifty for the first quarter of this year, fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. Please visit our local restaurants and encourage out-of-town visitors that they stay in our hotel rooms so we can increase this number for FY two thousand twenty-seven. Did you hear that, honey? Our free cash balance has been certified by the D O R at twelve million, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-two. Our long-range forecast indicates solid free cash for the foreseeable future. The value of the comprehensive stabilization fund currently stands at over three point five million, which is up a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars. And our other post-employment benefits, which is retiree health insurance balance, comes in at thirty-seven million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-two. That's up four point two million from last year. I wish again to thank department heads, town employees, superintendent of schools, finance committee, and especially the town council for their assistance and guidance over these last five weeks that I have been your town administrator. In accordance with the requirements of the Wakefield Home Rule Charter, I am extremely pleased to present the fiscal two thousand twenty-five report for the town of Wakefield. This report is also included in your voter booklets and has been on the town's website. Certain departments have encumbered funds from last year for ongoing projects or bills that carried over into this fiscal year. Due to the efforts of department heads and employees, two million, fifty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars was returned to the town last year. And in addition to that, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety was encumbered to be expended in this fiscal year. But I would now like to address some specifics in our departments. General Government. General Government consists of the town council, accounting, I T, treasurer, legal, tax collector, the assessor, the town clerk, elections, registration and expenses, the finance committee, conservation committee, planning board, and board of appeals. General Government represents three point two million of our budget, and these departments returned a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars to the town. Each individual department is also broken down in your books. General Government also encumbered a hundred and sixty-one, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars to be used in fiscal twenty-six. And the highlight of that is a hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and eleven for I T for purchases of services and capital, capital outlay. Second category is protections of persons and property. This area concerns police and fire protection, fire alarms and traffic lights, building department, animal control, the parking clerk, and emergency management. As a group, these budgets represent sixteen million, six hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars of the budget. And these departments returned a hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. I believe I speak for the whole community when I say we remain grateful to our first responders for putting their lives at risk so that we can be safe. The third is human services. The human services departments consist of the Council on Aging, which runs the Senior Center, the Health Department, the Recreation Department, and the Veterans Department. These departments have returned eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred, I'm sorry, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars back to the town. The Public Works Department, another department dedicated to the safety and welfare of our community, returned fifty-one thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars to the town. They also encumbered three hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars for ongoing projects in fleet maintenance, building, forestry, and parks, and highway. Of that, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and one is for capital projects, and a hundred and eighty-four, six hundred and thirteen thousand is for the operating budget. The Water and Sewer Enterprise Accounts also ended the year in the black, returning a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars to fund balance. Education. The education portion of the budget includes the school department, the library, and the vocational school. These departments all completed the year within budget and returned sixty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars to the town and carried forward a hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five. And any specific questions can be directed to Superintendent Lyons, who is with us today. The remainder of the budget line items consist of non-department or unclassified expenses, particularly in the area of general insurance. As a group, this section returned a hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars, the bulk of which was in reserve fund and unemployment. Again, the biggest return to the town occurred in the area of group health insurance, returning four hundred thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars to the fund balance. The cost of health insurance continues to be a budget driver and something that the administration will be watching very closely, both on the local, the state, and the national levels. I want to thank the moderator in town meeting for the opportunity to address you this morning, my first meeting as your town administrator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This concludes my report.
Any discussion on the motion under Article One? There being no discussion, all in favor of the motion to accept the report for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five budget, all in favor? All opposed. Motion Two, to see if the vote, see if the town will vote to authorize the board of assessors to use such free cash as may be in the treasury or any part thereof in computing the tax rate for the fiscal period ending June thirtieth, two twenty-six, or to see what the town will do about it. Mayreen.
Motion that the town authorize the board of assessors to use four million, fifty thousand dollars in free cash in computing the tax rate for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six.
Fincom. Without prompting Mr. Sullivan. Thank you.
Good morning. The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Tom, two-thirds, right? Just double checking. No, oh, not two-thirds. Major, oh, and I have it written right there. Any, any discussion under the motion under Article Two? There being no discussion, all in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Article Three, oh, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, including water retained earnings and sewer retained earnings to supplement the water and/or sewer budget for the period of July first, two twenty-five to June thirtieth, two twenty-six, or to see what the town will do about it. Mayreen Butts.
Motion that the town raise and appropriate zero dollars from sewer retaining earnings and two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from water retained earnings in order to carry out the purpose of this article.
Is there a second? Fincom.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Joseph Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Department of Public Works is requesting two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from water retained earnings to supplement the water enterprise budget for the period of July one, two thousand twenty-five to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
That's it? Out of keeping, we're out of here, Joey, huh? Any discussion on the motion under Article Three? No discussion, all in favor. The motion to raise and appropriate zero from the sewer retained earnings and two twenty, two hundred and twenty-five thousand for the water retained earnings to carry out the purpose of this article, all in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Article Four, you're going to have to read along, read along at home, folks, because to see, Article Four, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town council on behalf of the town or the petition legislature for passage of special legislation substantially as provided below, provided that the legislature may reasonably vary the form and substance requested legislation within the scope of the general public objective of this petition. This is a sent, this is an act authorizing the town of Wakefield to establish a means-tested senior citizen property tax exempted exemption. The rest of the article goes on and on, and I'm sure that Victor's going to explain this to you. Do we have a motion? Mayreen Butts.
Motion that the town authorize the town council to petition the state legislature to enact special legislation as described in this article.
Fincom. You up on this? Second, sorry, second, thank you, Mayreen. I stand corrected.
And the Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Victor.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Victor Santinello, your town assessor, one Highland Ave. This is a renewal, it'll be our third renewal of a home rule petition that provides an additional form of senior tax relief. What we did was create a program based off the senior circuit breaker income tax credit. We put together some local qualifying criteria, like owning and occupying in the town for at least ten years. Co-applicant has to be at least age sixty, and you can't have any other excessive assets. And if you apply, our timeline is usually apply in August and September, quick one-page application. And the town will match your senior, senior circuit breaker income tax credit. Pretty good plan that we come up with, and it's helped, on average, in the six years since it was first adopted, an average of two hundred and twenty-five people each and every year. The reason we created this plan is, under the state guidelines, there is one senior exemption, but the income and asset requirements are so low, we only had, on average, thirty, thirty-five people a year. A lot of cities and towns are faced with trying to help the most vulnerable of certain populations, and they hang their hats on just increasing that exemption. Well, we wanted to widen participation and come up with something that more people could avail themselves of. And this is what we came, come up with. The cost is shared throughout the rest of the residential tax base. So as a, you know, taxpayer, it costs me about fifty dollars extra a year on my tax bill that helps to keep, you know, on average, two hundred and twenty-five seniors aged in place and remain vibrant in our community. That's all I have.
Sueable majority, Mr. Mullen? Any discussion on the motion under Article Four? There be no discussion, that the town authorize town council to petition state legislature to enact special legislation as described in this article, all in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sufficient sum of money to make repairs to Middlesex Court and Middlesex Street, private ways within the town in accordance with the provisions of General Law's Chapter Eighty, Section one seventy-five dash ten of the Code of the Town or otherwise, and to determine whether to fund the appropriate appropriation by borrowing or otherwise in over a period of time to assess betterment and to see what the town will do about it. Mayreen Butts.
Motion that the town appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand to make specific repairs to Middlesex Court and Middlesex Street, private ways within the town, such repairs being required by public necessity and convenience. The betterments be assessed to the property owners benefited thereby over a period of up to twenty years. And that to raise this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town council is authorized to borrow the said sum under the pursuant of General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
Is there a second? Fincom.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Mr. Renaud.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Bill Renaud, town engineer. Article Five requests town meeting approval to facilitate the construction of drainage improvements to alleviate a significant flooding problem at the Middlesex Court and Middlesex Street intersections, as shown in the photos within the slide. The proposal will install five new drainage structures and approximately three hundred and fifty feet of new drain pipe and will connect to the town's Traverse Street drainage system. The cost for the work will be borne by the abutters of the two private ways and will have no tax levy impact. I respectfully request your support for Article Five and would be happy to answer any questions.
This is two-thirds, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Any discussion on the motion under Article Five? There being no discussion, I've got to read this one. That the town appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand to make up specific repairs to Middlesex Court and Middlesex Street, private ways within the town, such repairs being required by public necessity and convenience. The betterments by, betterments be assessed to the property owners benefited there, there over a period of up to twenty years. And to raise this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town council is authorized to borrow the said sum under, under and pursuant to General Law's Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes thereof. All in favor? All opposed? Is anyone opposed to this? You're opposed to it. Okay. Tellers, you're up. You count. All in favor, put your hand in the air and make sure, you keep it in the air until your vote has been counted. Jonathan. The mic is on here.
Thirteen in the south.
Thirty-two in the center.
That's everybody? All opposed? There's one, okay. One in the middle, yeah, okay. Total bets? What is it? It's total. Oh, okay. Seventy to one, motion carries. Article Six, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town council pursuant to General Law's Chapter Forty, Section fourteen, and any other applicable authority to accept a grant of drainage easements on the property known and numbered as fifteen Traverse Street and one hundred Nahant Street, Wakefield, Massachusetts, and to raise the appropriate sum of one dollar to carry out the purpose of these articles, to see what the town will do about it. Mayreen Butts.
Motion that the town vote to authorize the town council pursuant to General Law, Chapter Forty, Section fourteen, and any other applicable authority to accept a grant of drainage easements on the properties known and numbered as fifteen Traverse Street and a hundred Nahant Street, Wakefield, Massachusetts, and to raise the appropriate sum of one dollar to carry out the purpose of this article.
Is there a second? Fincom. Mr. Sullivan.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Mr. Renaud, you're back up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article Six requests town meeting approval to accept drainage easements at the fifteen Traverse Street and one hundred Nahant Street properties. In researching the Traverse Street drainage system tie-in for Article Five, it was determined that the town did not reserve a drainage easement for the Traverse Street drainage systems discharge when disposing of the former Franklin School property. Additionally, town records show that the existing Traverse Street drainage system cuts through a portion of the front yard of the fifteen Traverse Street parcel. Approval of this housekeeping article will provide the town the ability to maintain its existing drainage systems on both properties. Both the property owner of fifteen Traverse Street, as well as the condo trustees of the former Franklin School property, have reviewed the proposal and are supportive of these easements conveyances. I respectfully request your support for Article Six, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Any discussion on the motion under Article Six? There being no discussion, this is also two-thirds vote. All in favor? All opposed? Is anybody opposed? No, motion carries unanimously. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter one forty-seven of the general bylaws entitled Sidewalk Cafes by adding the following language, Section one forty-seven dash fifteen enforcement. Compliance with the terms of the sidewalk cafe, cafe street use permit shall be enforced by the police department. And then the, then the penalties are listed in there, which you can read along at home. All right, Mr. Leiber's up.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Not sure, are the slides?
You want to do your motion first, Dan.
Motion that the town vote to amend Chapter one forty-seven of the general bylaws entitled Sidewalk Cafes by adding the text set forth in the Article Seven of the warrant.
Is there a second? No Fincom, right, Mr. Sullivan? All righty. Dan, you are up.
Okay, are the slides available? Good morning. Thank you, thank you for coming. For Article Seven through twelve, the remaining articles that we have this morning, just a very brief background. The bylaw review committee, which is authorized under our charter, has been meeting for the last three and a half years over the course of forty-four meetings. And we've reviewed the general bylaws as well as the zoning bylaws. It's a group of ten dedicated residents, along with many people in the town. We've had immense contributions by many people from businesses, town employees, residents, people from out-of-town who wish to contribute. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank both our town councils that happen to be here, our dedicated town council, Tom Mullen, as well as our special council, and for those who are following along with spelling, S E L, Mark Bobrowski, who, as was introduced earlier, is really the person who knows land, land use law immensely, probably amongst the best in this state. He's often cited by probably amongst the best in this state. He's often cited by court decisions and so forth in the various books that he has authored. So, with that, we have a few housekeeping motions first. These are Articles Seven, Eight, Nine, and Ten, and then we'll get to zoning in Eleven. So, for Article Seven, this is a relatively straightforward article. It's to actually make a minor update to, if you look in the warrant itself, you'll see the, the specific language. It's to add an enforcement component to the actual bylaw so that if there is a, a problem with the actual sidewalk cafes, particularly in how they're enforced, that it allows for the police to do it as opposed to potentially the building administrator, which is not typically an area that he would be in charge of. So, it's really to classify and clarify what is actually happening there.
Any discussion on the motion under Article Seven? Majority vote, Mr. Mullen? Majority, right? Yeah. All, okay, the motion before you is that the town vote to amend Chapter One Forty-seven of the general bylaws entitled Sidewalk Cafes. Sounds cool. By adding the, the text as set forth under Article Seven. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter One Forty-eight of the general bylaws entitled News Racks by developing, by deleting Section One Forty-eight, Section Four dot dash, or Four B, ten, sub-ten, and replacing it with the following. A news rack may be deemed abandoned if no printed material is found in the news rack for a period of more than fifteen consecutive days. Any news rack deemed to be abandoning may be removed, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Lieber?
Thank you. Move that the town vote to amend Chapter One Forty-eight of the general bylaws entitled News Racks as set forth in Article Eight of the warrant.
Is there a second?
Thank you. The purpose of this article is to clarify the definition of abandonment. There are only a few news racks in the town. This way, should they not get used, the, some of them are not used regularly, then the town will have the ability to remove them and deem them abandoned.
Any discussion under Article Eight? There be no discussion. The motion before you is that the town vote to amend Chapter One Forty-eight of the general bylaws entitled News Racks as set forth in Article Eight of the warrant. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter, Section One Forty, ch, ch, Section One Fifty-four dash nine of the general bylaws entitled Marijuana Establishments Forbidden, by deleting the second sentence thereof and replacing it with the following. This prohibition shall not apply to the sale, distribution, or cultivation of marijuana for medical purposes licensed under Mass. General Laws Chapter Nine Forty-one, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Lieber?
Thank you. I move that the town vote to amend Chapter One Fifty-four dash nine of the general bylaws entitled Marijuana Establishments Forbidden as set forth in Article Nine of the warrant. The purpose of this article is to just ensure compliance-
Wait, is there a second? Second?
Thank you. The purpose of this article is to update the Chapter One Fifty-four nine to make sure that it is compliant with chapters, with MGL Chapter Ninety-four I, to ensure that it is actually allowed for medical marijuana establishments. It makes no changes to the other components as to what is permitted nor forbidden within the town.
Any discussion on the motion under Article Nine? There be no discussion. The motion is that the town vote to amend the, to amend Chapter One Fifty-four six dash nine of the general bylaws entitled Marijuana Establishments Forbidden as set forth under Article Nine in the motion. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter One Forty, not, One Nine One dash four of the general bylaws entitled Procedure for Designating Scenic Roads by deleting the line C thereafter, which provides, notify the commissioners of the Middlesex County and re-lettering the remaining lines, A through D, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Lieber?
I move that the town vote to amend Chapter One Ninety-one dash four of the general bylaws entitled Procedure for Designated Scenic Roads as set forth in Article Nine of the warrant.
Is there a second?
The purpose of this is to make a very minor change to the language to remove reference to a defunct public body as the, you may notice, the commissioner of Middlesex County no longer exists and have not existed for several decades.
Any discussion under Article Eleven? Motion before you. Oh, no, Article Ten, I'm sorry. Sorry. I'm, I'm jumping ahead since we're going at light speed anyway. That the town vote to amend Chapter One Nine One dash four of the general bylaws entitled Procedure for Designating Scenic Roads as set forth in Article Nine of the wa, warrant. All in favor? All opposed? Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to amend and recodify the zoning bylaw by taking the following steps, and if you want to take a few minutes to look at this, if you haven't already, um, and I'm sure Mr. Lieber's going to explain it. Mr. Lieber?
Thank you. I move that the town vote to recodify the zoning bylaw, Chapter One Ninety of the Code of the Town, by taking the following steps. One, deleting therefrom in their entirety Articles One through Twenty inclusive, but not the zoning map, the current zoning map. Number two, amending the said Chapter One Ninety by substituting the deleted provisions, Section One Point Zero through Eleven Point Zero inclusive in the document entitled Draft Eleven Wakefield Zoning Bylaw, September Twenty-second, Twenty Twenty-Five, Corrected to October Twentieth, Twenty Twenty-Five, on file in the office of the town clerk. Three, renumbering the provision referencing the existing zoning map to Section Two Point Zero. And four, authorizing the correction of any typographical errors and incorrect cross-references prior to submission of the said amendment in recodification to the office of the Attorney General for approval.
Is there a second? Do, do you, do you have a copy of the new motion? Okay, all right, just want to make sure. And Planning Board, right, you have to introduce yourself.
Jim Hogan, Eighty-seven B Gould Street, Chair of the Planning Board. Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend favorable action uh, on the basis that the recodification effort did a really good job in our estimation of making the information in the zoning bylaw more clear for anyone who wants to use it and able to be more easily used by anyone who wants to understand what their land use ability are in this town.
Tommy, is this two-thirds? Yeah, okay, thanks. Any discussion on the motion before you under Article Eleven? Oh, you, oh, sorry. It's gonna pass anyway. Go ahead, Dan.
Could have been the fastest, fastest presentation ever. So, the per-
I'm impressed.
The purpose of Article Eleven is to recodify our zoning bylaws. This changes the zoning bylaws, which if you've tried to look at them, is a series of bylaws that we have worked with, amended at town meeting over the course of the last forty-plus years. It hasn't really been recodified, and it's frankly confusing in its current form. So, under the Bylaw Review Committee, we've gone ahead, worked with Attorney Bobrowski, which was authorized with the funding in, at town meeting of Twenty Twenty-two, to make sure that we could actually recodify the zoning bylaws. This changes the references. It also updates language, makes sure that it's consistent with more recent court decisions, updates to Mass. General Laws, and well, as well as making sure that we can do things that are consistent with the goals of the town. There was a lot of collaboration with many, many, many people over the course of the last three and a half years in organizations. The Planning Board, as mentioned, has been a very significant participant in this and given fantastic feedback, along with the Zoning Board of Appeals, which implements many of the aspects of the, the bylaws themselves, and when people have questions and they need changes or exceptions, they need variances and uh, they need special permits, they typically will go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. The third group, place that they may go is the town council. And one of the things that's unusual about Wakefield, in a really positive way, is that we have three different adjudicatory bodies that can actually be used for land use. All of them have had significant impact and input into this particular recodification. Several town departments also had direct impact. This includes the Planning Department, the Building Department, Development, Public Safety, Public Works, Public Health, Town Administrator, and lots of other places in the town council of aging and others that have actually provided input into making sure that the, this recodification meets the needs of the town now and in the future. We've also had a lot of input from our fellow residents, from the public, local entities, businesses, attorneys, land use attorneys, as well as general attorneys in other areas, and this has been fantastic. Because what it has really allowed us to do is to examine what is in the best interest of the town based upon the committee's expertise, to take that input, distill it, and through eleven drafts plus minor drafts in, in the interim, really go ahead and go through the machinations to figure out what works for the town and what doesn't. There were things that were put into drafts that were then removed because it was determined it was not in the best interest of the town. This does not make major changes to the, to the zoning. There are no changes to dimensional components. There are no changes to the maps. It is much simpler to find information, to read information, to look up what can we do with property, what can't we do with property. It also allows for new creative development in businesses. So, some of the definitions have been added and improved, so there could be new businesses that previously were not explicitly permitted and possibly even prohibited in town, things like breweries and distilleries. Those are now defined, as well as if a developer wants to come in with a great idea that we haven't thought of in the town itself, they can come before this body to request creative development. And that way, the townspeople, us, actually still retain control over our town. It's a vital element of the recodification itself. It also allows for expanded services through the definitions, things such as senior housing. The current assisted living district, the definition was updated to include more forms of senior housing, which includes things such as independent living, assisted living, memory care. So, it really is making things much more current for today's and tomorrow's capabilities. It also continues the unique Wakefield success between the town boards. Our Planning Board, our Board of Appeals, and our town council work exceptionally well together and have for decades. It's unusual to see this across towns, but where it works here, we did not want to change it. And with any questions about the details of the zoning itself, we have Attorney Bobrowski present. He can get, he can get to any of the details of the language.
Attorney Bobrowski, you weren't here when I, when I referenced you as the dean of land use and bylaws. I just want credit for that, doing a lot of this litigation. I, I, your reputation preceded you in my mind. Um, any discussion under Article Eleven, the motion under Article Eleven? There be no discussion. The motion is that, oh, the motion is, as Dan just read it, it was a, it was modified uh, recently, so, uh, the motion that Mr. Lieber presented. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article Twelve. Oh, it is a two-thirds. Oh, this one too. Oh, and it's staring me right in the face. All in favor? All opposed? Is anyone opposed that I can't see? Oh, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Motion carries. Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote to hear the report of the Bylaw Review Committee, accept it as a final report of the committee, and discharge the committee, or to see what the town will do about it.
Move that the town vote to accept the report of the Bylaw Review Committee as its final report and discharge the community, the committee with thanks.
Is there a second?
It is my privilege to be able to hand a copy of the final report, which is here, over to the moderator. Upon doing so, it will discharge the committee, which for the last three and a half years, forty-four meetings that I mentioned before, has worked very diligently to ac, actually meet the needs of our town. It is something that is get, gets created by our charter every five years. It will be due to be created in about another two years. I recommend anyone who has an interest in bylaws, how our town works. If you want to get involved, please, put in an application to the town council. They do the appointment and be a part of it. Many special thanks to all of the current members of the committee, which includes Catherine Howitt, Joe Pride, Eric Reed, Kevin York, also the former members, which includes Ann Santos, who served as vice chair, Lisa Kutil, Lucy Fox, Tim Lilly, Alexandra Merkowitz, Town Council Mullen, Special Counsel Bobrowski, and former Town Councilor Bob Vincent, as he served as the liaison to the town council.
Before we uh, move on this, um, I, I, I want to thank Dan, um, and his whole committee for the time and effort. I mean, I deal with bylaws. Ugh. So, uh, you know, it's, this is, this is real work, okay? Um, and so I just, I just think that, you know, that the work they've done is, yeah, yeah. The, the trick now is to come up with something to keep that brain of his active, so uh, he's uh, you know, doesn't cause too much trouble at these meetings in fu, in the future, so we'll think up something, I'm sure. Um, thanks, Dan, seriously, and I've, I've dealt with them, you know, year to year and time to time. Oh! This is, this is like formal. Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, you're still here, huh? Jeez. Planning her escape, but halfway through the article. Any further discussion? There be no discussion. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, before you dissolve, um, I want to, as always, C A T. I mean, it probably took them three times as long to set up as we've been here. Um, the other thing is, I want to thank you people for coming. Uh, there was nothing hot, controversial, or sexy on, you know, we don't have the overflow room, we don't need the, but this is, I, I say this, it sounds corny, but I've, 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 since the first time I ran, when I first read all the appeals court cases and S J C cases, this is the purest form of democracy, and for you folks to get up on a Saturday morning and to come here, um, I think you owe yourselves a small round of applause. It's really, it's impressive. It's impressive that you feel that civic responsibility, and now, without further ado, the chairman of the town council.
Uh, a little repetitive, repetitive thank you to all those helped organizing today's town meeting. Thank you to the staff, committees, and volunteers who worked to get the articles passed. A special thank you to W C A T for the setup and streaming of our meeting. Thank you to the amazing Wakefield students with coffee and donuts in the hallway who are raising funds for the Wakefield Food Pantry. Lastly, congratulations Town Administrator Deke, Casey, for surviving your first town meeting. Um, with that, a motion to dissolve town meeting.
Is there a second? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.